It's 5:30 and I'll call the City Council meeting to order. We have a lot of items. One of the fun things that we get to do is recognize some folks. That's one of the things we're going to do tonight. It's why we have such a crowd. We appreciate everybody being here. But first of all, I'm going to call David Whitman to here to give us the invocation. For us too. Too long.
Yeah, for me too. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we just have to thank you for all that you've done, the time that we have not met, those that have continued on the service and really behind the scenes for most people because we haven't been here to see it. It's been hard not being together, but you have sustained us, you've even strengthened us, and for some reason we feel stronger now than we were before. We know we are more united in our desperate need for you. Father, we live in days where common grace is not so common anymore. The grace that comes unto a community, whatever faith they are, whether they even have a faith, they have a common sense of decency to be there for one another. It's an amazing Lord. People literally begging for people to come and receive water and warmth, businesses and churches opening up in times of distress and trouble. The Sheriff's Department, or Police Department, I'm sorry, Police Department looking for people to give something to and aid to. Father, we live in a day where leadership tends to feel they're entitled, but in our county and this city, they feel gifted to give and gifted to be there for one another and gifted to serve one another. And we know, Father, it is a gift from God and common grace, and we just thank you for it. Years ago, Father, many years ago, you said that next time the eyes of the nation turn to Stephenville, it'll be what I did, not the evil one. Many times, we've had to live with promises that you've given that are transgenerational. We just don't even get to see them in our lifetime, but we have lived to see that the leadership, not only in the decisions made to keep some electricity on for most of the people, all of the little decisions that we just have to say, "Thank you, Father," because the people have come and they have demonstrated wisdom and counsel that we have to thank you for. And so, we do thank you as a community, individuals, organizations. We thank you from the bottom of our heart. We now ask that you would visit us here today in a time where we could look down and be discouraged. We ask that you would help us look up and be encouraged. We want to thank you for your hand being on our mayor, who has demonstrated humbly a strength even in difficult times, the personal strength and leadership of humble gratitude. We thank you for that. We pray that we would follow the examples that are set before us. We pray for those in need still. We pray that we'd be able to find them and be able to help them. We pray for those who are still attending the needs of the sick and the needy. We thank you for the incredible report from Pastor Corey of the amazing things you're doing there in the hospital. And we just pray that you just keep it going, keep it going until it shines like a light throughout the whole state and the nation, where a people that love God, and we love one another, and we serve one another. We ask this and we do this. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I just want to mention to those who are here tonight and those who are watching, Ministry Alliance meets regularly, and I can tell you that they pray for all of us, for our city, for our workers, and I know that God's grace is on us largely because of what you do for us. And thank you all for what you do, also for the work that you do to take care of the city of Stephenville. Thank you for your work. Also, in your prayer, you mentioned the electricity. And I just want to recognize, I formed an ad hoc committee with three City Council members and some citizens, and to deal with the electricity issue, and Ricky Thurman is head up that committee and has sent a report, and will be making a report that we're going to send to the Governor's Office to deal with how, you know, the electricity problem we have on board, and you've done a great job with that. I appreciate that very much. Okay, we're going to turn. The next thing is that we have our pledge, and I've asked our Councilman Brandon Hookerby to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring Texas' flag, and our allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
There's a lot of things that we get to do that's fun, though a lot of it isn't fun. I want you all to know that your City Council spends boatloads of time working on city staff and with the city staff and on their own, visiting with citizens, and I appreciate everybody here. But tonight, we get to do some pretty fun things. And Brandon, we're going to recognize Lambda Chi Alpha for their volunteer efforts after the winter storm. So, who is, where, okay, you're going up here, Lambda Chi. You coming up here?
Sure.
As you all will know, Brandon's up here with this. This is his fraternity. So, he's an alumni. So, we're giving a certificate tonight of appreciation to Lambda Chi Alpha for their selfless efforts in assisting the city of Stephenville distributing water during the winter storm, Yuri, is the name of it, I guess. So, we're here to recognize them. If y'all were out there to see that, I went out there one day and I was surprised to see all these guys here loading boatloads, literally boatloads of water into people's cars and pickups. So, thank you all for what you did to be volunteering for the city of Stephenville. Give him y'all's certificate. Would you want to all say something?
Oh, yeah, I'll say something.
There you go.
I'm the president of Lambda Chi here at Charleston, and I just want to thank the city of Stephenville, too, for allowing us to come and get that service opportunity back to the community. Just want to thank the city of Stephenville, thank the city workers, too. I saw a lot of y'all out there helping, too. So, being a hand's make a lot of work, so.
There you go. Now, I want you all to know that it's one of the good things about Charleston State University is we have lots of volunteers. These guys just happen to do it during the middle of the storm and aftermath of the storm. So, we appreciate you all. We appreciate Charleston, all y'all's efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Have a great day.
Thank you all.
Okay, Jason.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've been in this business for a very long time, longer than I want to admit. But every time I'm asked, "Who is your most important employee?" Is it the fireman? Is it the policeman? Who is it? My response is literally always, "It's the water guy." And you get this looks and, "Wow." And my response is, "You can live without police." Not very well, but you can live without police. You can live without fire, guys. You can live without food. What's the one thing that cities do and produce that you cannot live without? And that's water. So, these guys, as you're going to hear tonight, go out in all kinds of weather, in all kinds of hours, in all kinds of conditions to make sure that you have safe water. And Mr. Mayor, during the storm, these guys performed unbelievably. And tonight, members of the council, members of the public, you're going to be able to hear what these heroes did. And yes, they're as much heroes as our policemen and firemen.
Mayor, members of the council, we're going to go through a little more formal process with our awards this evening, and we'll start with the members of the Fire Marshal's Office. So, Fire Marshal Schump and Inspector Lockenhour, please. Mayor, members of the council, we're going to go through a little more formal process with our awards this evening, and we'll start with the members of the Fire Marshal's Office. So, Fire Marshal Schump and Inspector Lockenhour, please. And so, what we're going to start off with is an award citation that kind of details formally what they did during that week. From Monday, February 15th, 2021 through Friday, February 19th, 2021, the members of the Stephenville Fire Department's Fire Marshal Office were faced with a daunting challenge as it related to commercial fire sprinkler systems in the historical cold weather produced by winter storm Yuri. During this period, they proactively located or responded to over 100 locations inspecting commercial sprinkler systems. Unfortunately, in some locations, the systems had burst due to the extremely cold temperatures and damage was done to the building, as well as leaking water placing a strain on our water system. However, in many locations, Fire Marshal Schump and Inspector Lockenhour were able to locate frozen but broken systems and turn them off and alert the property owner. They were also able to turn systems off preemptively before damage to the system caused destruction to property. Through their efforts, damage was prevented to multiple properties within the city of Stephenville. They were also able to prevent additional strain on the municipal water system that would have occurred if several burst commercial sprinkler systems began leaking while there were also multiple mainline breaks within the city. Fire Marshal Schump and Inspector Lockenhour are to be commended for their dedication to service and commitment to the citizens of Stephenville during winter storm Yuri. So, they are presented with a meritorious unit citation, and thank you from us. Okay. As I call your name, please come up here. Jeremy Jennings, Danny Boucher, J.D. Sanders, Cody Dennis, Daniel Rodriguez, Jamison Ali, Austin Ball, Cody Stone, J.B. Galindo, Albert Benny, Tucker Blackshear, Lane Sharp, Keegan Hall, and Dale White. From Sunday, February 14th, 2021 through Saturday, February 20th, 2021, the members of the city of Stephenville Utility Department were faced with an extreme workload and extreme weather conditions. During this period, they responded to and repaired 10 mainline breaks in sub-freezing weather conditions. They responded to over 550 water cutoffs due to the storm. On Monday, February 15th, 2021, while responding to water cutoffs and mainline breaks, members also had to work through major issues at the Lillian Street groundwater storage tank. Those issues involved the turning off of electricity to the pump station when electricity load shed occurred across the entire state of Texas. When this occurred, the generator responsible for running the pump station was unable to start due to the diesel fuel gelling in the tank because of the extreme cold temperatures. Members of the Utility Department were able to work through these issues in the extreme environment throughout the day. With time running out on the depletion of the water supply for Stephenville, these members were able to start the generator, and the Lillian Street pump station was able to reinforce and stabilize the water supply for the city of Stephenville. There can be no doubt that without the hard work, dedication to service, and commitment to the citizens of Stephenville by the members of the Utility Department, the city of Stephenville would not have been able to maintain its potable water supply throughout winter storm Yuri. Therefore, all of these members are awarded a meritorious unit award, and thank you from all of us.
Thank you.
Hang on just a second. We'll hand these out. Jeremy Jennings. Who do you have?
I have one.
Okay.
While your handles out, I wanted to say something.
Albert.
You sent me, basically sent me a video of a guy down a water hole, up to the, above their knees, grabbing a pipe, going everywhere. What was the temperature? I think it was zero outside. Well, the next day, I got a call from a commissioner in Austin, one of the biggest state agencies, and she was talking about how they had to shut down business because of the cold. I'd asked her, "Why we can't get something done?" And she said, "Well, because of freezing, we had to shut down." And I sent her the video.
Yes.
And I said, "This is what happens when people are dedicated to come to work for Stephenville."
Yeah, that's right.
These are guys, our heroes.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
There you are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I've never had all of your lines.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Which one?
You got one.
One handed, brother.
There you be.
There you are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Lane Sharp?
Cold, there you go.
One guy wearing a white shirt, back in the front.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a Philly.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
There you are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
There you are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
There you are.
Thank you, sir.
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 There you are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Lane Sharp?
Cold, there you go.
One guy wearing a white shirt, back in the front.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a Philly.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
There you are.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There you are.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, thank you very, very much.
Nick, you want to say something about your guys?
Just a minute.
Okay. We have one more, so I'll call out seven of you, and if you would remain up there, please. Jeremy Jennings, Daniel Rodriguez, Austin Ball, Tucker Blackshear, Jamison Ali, Keegan Hall, and Albert Benny. If you, seven, will stay up there, please. We're going to give out one more award for these seven gentlemen, and I think it'll become apparent, and we have some pictures that you can see up here, and we'll read through what we're talking about. On Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, during winter storm Yuri, shortly before 7:00 a.m., the city of Stephenville Utility Department responded to a mainline water break in the 1100 block of West McNeil Street in Stephenville. According to multiple weather sources, the ambient air temperature was approximately zero to minus two degrees Fahrenheit. As members of the Utility Department worked throughout the morning to excavate the hole in the street where the leak was and prepare the area for repair, they faced many challenges due to the extreme weather. The backhoe being used to open up the street area where the leak was located had issues running due to the diesel in the backhoe beginning to gel while it was working. Another challenge faced by the Utility Department was being able to shut off the flow of water to the area where the break was located. They attempted to close multiple valves to shut the flow of water off and found them non-responsive. At this point, due to the leak being approximately 600 gallons a minute and being able to shut off the water flow to the damaged area, the decision was made for members of the Utility Department to enter the hole and repair the damaged pipe while the water was flowing. While this is always a hazardous operation due to flow of water and no visibility while submerged, on this day, it was an extremely dangerous and life-threatening operation. The seven members who entered the water on this day faced extremely cold air temperatures along with high-flowing cold water with minimal protection, and they collectively worked and submerged in zero-visibility water for an hour and a half to successfully make the repair. Therefore, for placing themselves in harm's way without regard for their own personal safety in order to repair and maintain the potable water supply for the citizens of Stephenville, they are awarded a valor award from the city. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen, very, very much.
If I could just add to that very briefly. These guys really are heroes, and I do want to say thank you to the council and to the management team for acknowledging that today. There's really not a lot else we could say. We came together as a unit here, these guys did, but not just that. The Police Department out looking for leaks, the Fire Marshal's Office, the paramedics with us, it was, it was an extraordinary display of teamwork. And again, thank you for honoring these humble servants today. It's a, it's a true honor to work for these guys. Thank you.
Stephenville's full of heroes. We appreciate you guys a whole lot. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is we're going to have some, and I'll allow for public comment, so Kim, you will come up? No, wait a minute, we have one more thing first. We have consideration or approval of resolution authorizing an agreement for the transfer of a retired law enforcement K-9 officer, Bucky, to Officer Gary Roberts. Sorry, chief, I looked too far.
It's all good, Mr. Mayor. We talking about heroes, there's one more to honor tonight. And so, in, "Good evening, distinguished members of council, Mr. Mayor. In October of 2016, the Stephenville Police Department, we hired our first K-9 with hiring of Officer Bucky, badge number 446, and he began that service, and since then, he has honorably served the city of Stephenville and all of its citizens. And he's taken a lot of narcotics, dangerous criminals, off the streets. In addition, has served with community relations, deescalating high-risk calls for service, and dismantling drug trafficking organizations, not only here but all across North Texas. He has kept his handler and many, many of our officers safe. So, it is my sadness to report that it has come to that time with Officer Bucky's health and life, that he goes into retirement, into the next chapter. And I ask for your approval to, for that resolution to transfer him to his handler officer, Gary Roberts."
I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we approve Resolution 2021 R-06.
A motion is second to approve the resolution. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, chief. Give that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thanks, God. Appreciate it. Thanks for letting me know. I'll take care of it. Okay, we're going to adjust the agenda of one item. Kim? We're going to have, we're going to have a general discussion tonight from Kim. I'll let you introduce yourself and please state your address.
Okay, I know how to clear the room.
In three minutes, please.
My name is Kim Wilson-Leverton, and I live at 950 North Harbin Drive, Stephenville, Texas. So, I am a citizen of the city of Stephenville, but I have been a citizen of Eret County for about 44 years, pretty much exclusively. So, this is my home, and I appreciate you always giving us an opportunity to speak in front of the city council. I'm here today, as most of you know, because I've probably accosted many of you in various and assembly places in public, with regard to the Harbin Drive expansion and design of that road and street. that's proposed to be placed in front of the homes that are on Harbin Drive, particularly between Fry Street and Overhill. And the reason that we object is because that is exclusively a residential area. There is no other place in the City of Steenville where a median fronts homes. It will make us unable to turn into our driveways directly from the road and a variety of other issues that I have addressed with the committee, and I apologize to the committee for not being there at the last committee meeting. I had a family emergency and couldn't attend. A couple of things. One, a cost-benefit analysis has not been provided to the city for these medians and the construction of the median and the landscaping. Engineers from Fort Worth that the city hired said it is advised that Harbin Drive be built with a median to protect the driver and the neighboring community due to the projected traffic volume on Harbin Drive. They also admitted and agreed that there had been no traffic study, that there had been no data collected, and no data analysis as to the relative safety of a median or not a median. So I might could generally agree as a general proposition that it is safest to have a concrete median down a four-lane divested road that goes through the middle of town, maybe, but I can't necessarily agree, and nor do I believe that the engineers have provided any data to support that. So I would ask that the city specifically look at those issues before it spends hundreds of thousands of dollars on a concrete median and landscaping. That then has to be spent tens of thousands of dollars every year to maintain. And I know that we've addressed this, and y'all have addressed this, and I understand that you've addressed this with the maintenance of our landscape and our city, but I'm going to leave you with this picture, because we've addressed this for months and months now. And this is the corner of Harbin and Fry, and this is the city-maintained corner with the lovely brick and all of the weeds that are growing in between it. Still to this day, I took this picture on Saturday as I went to the football game, walked to the football game from my house. So I would ask that the city really consider the expense of a median as it relates to the benefit of the safety of that design. I would be happy to talk to all of you individually. I've talked to several of you, and I do appreciate you listening to me about my concerns with regard to that concrete median in front of our homes. It's a matter of convenience for me, sure. It's also a matter of expense for the city that I don't believe is necessary in this situation.
Thank you, ma'am. You may have any questions for Kim?
I'm happy to talk.
I bet you are.
But I'm sure y'all don't want me to.
Usually lawyers are, isn't it? Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. We'll take it. I'll make sure staff consider that. Next item, consider approval of seasonal employee positions. I'm assuming Allen will take that?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, we are partners with Eraz County in the Eraz County Vaccination Center. As of today, we have given over 3,000 shots, both first shots and second shots. This week, we've gone into full-day, everyday operations. Next week, we will continue operating every day. It's estimated that we'll run out of second shots next Friday at noon. Next Friday, we have 1,000 shots that we currently have in hand, and we're going to give about 500 second shots. I give you all these statistics to let you know that there are approximately 40 workers per day at the vaccination center. While our new software will reduce that number, we really don't know to what extent. We think it's going to reduce it by about half, but we don't know for sure. Both yesterday, being Monday, and last Friday, the vaccination center was short on volunteers, and it was very difficult to keep up with the flow of folks. We have been asked by the folks, particularly our fire department, to find a way around this. After much discussion, we have come to the solution that we'll probably need to have seasonal workers in order to get 23. Well, to give you an example, in order to get 10 lifeguards per day, we have to have a pool of 80 lifeguards. So what we'll do with these folks is we hope to have a pool of about 120, 130 folks that we'll be able to pull from on a daily basis. If we don't need 23 folks, we wouldn't have 23 folks. What we decided to do, discussion was that we would pay them a range, and then when we looked at all the positions, they were all basically the same. And so what we're proposing to do is to pay them $12 an hour with a work week not to exceed 20 hours, because that way it keeps us out of the problem that we have with the insurance and the retirement. It is estimated that the weekly salary is about $12,000 at 23. On Thursday of last week, the county commissioners agreed to pay one-half of the expenses so long as a report was made to them monthly, as well as to the council monthly. And so what we would suggest, or what we would recommend, is approving a number of positions not to exceed 23 daily for an amount of $12 per hour with work weeks not to exceed 20 hours, and that that number be on a as-needed basis, meaning no more than 23, but we could have less than 23. Again, we think that the new software, which they're working on tonight, as a matter of fact, the preliminary things that they have to do, the information that they impart, but we've been given the estimate that it will cut this workforce in half. So with all due respect, we respectfully recommend the approval of this issue, this item.
Any questions?
What is the estimated timeline for this, potentially?
Timeline to start or timeline to end?
Both.
We expect it'll take about a month to get the pool going. Being seasonal, we have to have a start and an end time. We estimate right now that it would be about six months. We hope it's going to be less than that, given the numbers that we have now. I heard today that based on statistics, that the CDC believes that we're on the downward drop with herd immunity. Don't know how valid that is at this point. We don't know how valid any of them are, any of the estimates are. But right now, we anticipate six months or less. If it is longer than that, then we'll come back to you guys and the county commissioners, depending on how things are working out at that time.
So your request is to authorize it for six months?
Yes.
Not to exceed six months?
Yes, sir. Not to exceed six months.
And is it $12,000 per entity is paying that? So it's $24,000?
No, sir.
So it'd be $6,000?
Yes, sir.
For the city?
That's right.
So about $156,000?
Ballpark, yes, sir.
Questions? Other questions?
With this, because I volunteered out there a couple of times, with this, this will allow us not to have as much other city staff, fire, police out there that are working overtime for this to help with that?
Mr. Huckabee, these are the data entry people. They're not the professional people.
Correct, but we've had lots of those people having to do those jobs. So I'm saying, is that going to allow us not to have fire and police people who are paying overtime to do those jobs?
To do the data entry stuff? You're absolutely correct.
So it should save us money?
It should, yes, sir.
Are these expenditures reimbursable from some of the funding sources available?
From what we have been advised, twice, they are refundable by FEMA.
Okay. 100% or 30%?
100%. And we received that in two separate emails from TINAM.
I trust TINAM by how much?
That's in addition to the CARES Act money we've already received.
That is correct.
Of which we spent.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to authorize city staff to approve the creation of a seasonal employee pool for the vaccination center.
Second. Mayor, I second.
Are we going to, is that including not to exceed six months?
For the term of six months, yes, sir.
Is it, you second, Gerald, you second?
Yes.
Okay. Is that all right, ready to do it that way? We have a, all right, we have a motion and a second, and a discussion. Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Allen.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to some committee reports. Mr. Hasky, Tourism and Visitors Bureau Committee.
Mr. Mayor, the Steenville Tourism and Visitors Bureau Committee met on Tuesday, February 23rd. Julie Smith presented an update of the All-In Barrel Race, which was held December 3rd through 13th at the One Star Arena. The race attracted 986 participants and the family members to Steenville. Comparison of the hot funds was provided December 2020 compared to December 2019. While the comparison did show a drop in hot funds, mostly due to the fact that we were seeing a substantial spike in COVID-19 numbers, but we did see an increase in sales tax revenue over that same timeframe. And then Julie also presented the 2021 Steenville Tourism and Visitors Bureau plan to include an application for the GO Texan Retirement Community Application, plans for Moolaw Fest for 2021, additional information about the Day Tripper, and plans to work with him on promotional items going forward for this year. And that is the committee report. Any questions or comments? No?
Mayor, there's the, thank you, sir. Public Works, Mr. Nix.
Thank you, Mayor. On 23rd of February, the Public Works Committee met. First item on our agenda was the Main Street Program. As members of the council will remember, we have applied in the past for some Texas Community Development Block grants administered by the State of Texas Department of Agriculture. Most of those programs are matching of some sort. In this case, that is still the case here. We discussed the fact that these projects have to have professional designs. After we looked at several engineering proposals, Freezing Nichols was selected as being the top-rated submitter for that grant application project, and they will design the project and submit the grant for us. The cost will be nothing to the city if we do not receive the grant, so it is actually no risk to us. Freezing Nichols has agreed to put the package together and submit it for us, and if we're approved, they will do the design, but if we're not approved, then the city is not out anything. After discussion, the committee voted to forward a positive recommendation to enter into an agreement with Freezing Nichols for the design engineering services of that Main Street application. And I would make the motion to ask the council to approve Resolution 2021-R...
Zero seven.
...07 authorizing the agreement for professional services with Freezing Nichols for the CDBG block grant from the downtown area.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Mark? Further discussion, questions? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes.
Second part of that project is the designation of a Main Street area. Y'all have Main Street District, I've said, I mean, y'all have a map of that district that's outlined. It includes the majority of the downtown area and stretches out in all four directions. The committee discussed this, and we need to authorize staff to identify a grant-compliant project within that Main Street District to give Freezing Nichols an opportunity to work on that. Once we have identified that project, I would ask that, I would make a motion to pass Resolution 2021-R-08, authorizing that to be determined as our Main Street area, as outlined as the map is presented.
I'll second. A motion and a second, Mark? Discussion, questions? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes.
Next item. Next item on our agenda was the Harbin Drive improvements. We have, in the past, had a significant amount of input from citizens and staff and Tarleton about the design of Harbin Drive. We have Freezing Nichols retained, who is a professional engineering firm, to design that section of road from Washington Street to Northwest Loop. As a part of their recommendation, and as was read earlier, they recommended the installation of a median to be a divider between the two lanes of traffic that are northbound and the two lanes of traffic that are southbound. It was their opinion that for the safety and for the smoother flow of the traffic, that that median should be in that design, and that was their professional recommendation. And the committee, after a significant amount of discussion, the majority of the committee agreed that that probably would be the best implementation of that design, to include that for the overall safety, and because the traffic count on Harbin will do nothing but increase as Tarleton grows. And I have had several people tell me they don't travel on Harbin because of the rough surface that's there now, and I think when it is repaired and there are more lanes of traffic that move and the speed of the traffic is better, because of that, I think we'll continue to see traffic and flow, the traffic increase in flow. And because of that, the majority of the committee felt like that we would be best served as a city to follow Freezing Nichols' design. There's no action necessary on that tonight. Last item on our agenda was the Harbin Drive improvements also, but this had to do with the drainage outfall. One of the significant things that our intention is in the reconstruction of Harbin is to improve the drainage for not only that area but for that entire side of Tarleton University. Tarleton, recognizing that the drainage comes not only from city streets but from their properties as well, has agreed to assist us with the design and the construction of the outfall from that drainage. And y'all have a map in your agenda that shows the additional part of that, which goes from Washington through Tarleton property, known as the Pecan Orchard, through our cemetery, across Swan Street, and it terminates in a lot of, approximately at the railroad right away across Swan Street. Freezing Nichols did not include this as a part of their original design. That was an oversight on our part and on their part, too, but they have come back to us and offered us an amendment to our contract with them for the amount of $137,611 not to exceed that amount. The committee discussed this and discussed it with Mr. Williams, the Director of Public Works. It was his opinion that we would save time and money overall if we included this as a part of the original design, and it would probably be more efficiently accomplished that way. It was the recommendation of the committee at that time that we bring a positive recommendation to the council to approve the amendment with Freezing Nichols for the total amount of $137,611 for the stormwater engineering design services. I would make that in the form of a motion, Mayor.
You have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second.
Mark seconds it. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
I want to make one comment about the part of this, Tarleton's agreement to do this. I feel very fortunate that Tarleton stepped up. By rule, by state law, they didn't have to step up in this project, and to be a good neighbor...
and it would probably be more efficiently accomplished that way. It was the recommendation of the committee at that time that we bring a positive recommendation to the council to approve the amendment with Freezing Nichols for the total amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars for the stormwater engineering design services. And I would make that in the form of a motion, Mayor.
Have a motion, who have a second?
I'll second.
Mark seconded it, any further discussion? Proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
I want to make one comment about, about the part of this, Tarleton's agreement to do this. I want, I feel very fortunate that Tarleton stepped up. By rule, by state law, they didn't have to step up in this project. And to be good neighbors and good participants in the city of Steenville, they stepped up and they've, they've offered a large amount of money to help do this project. And so I mean, I, I want to thank Tarleton, particularly Dr. Hurley and the work that he's done and Lori Beatty for project, this project. Thank you very much.
That is correct, Mayor.
Personnel Committee, Mr. Thurman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Personnel Committee met on February twenty-third, we had two items on the agenda. Excuse me, the first item was to consider approval of authorizing the Fire Department to apply for a safer grant. Across all of our departments in the city, we have perpetual personnel issues and not having enough people. This is an opportunity to tackle some of that problem in the Fire Department using federal dollars. This is a FEMA grant that lasts for three years, covers one hundred percent of the cost of the salaries. And after the three years, that cost will be borne by the city. The grant does not cover additional equipment requirements such as PPE and uniforms or any unplanned overtime. So the, the first year cost for non-reimbursable expenses would be about twenty-nine thousand dollars per firefighter. By year three, because a good portion of that is, is one-time cost in equipment, year three, the cost would be approximately twenty-four thousand dollars in unreimbursable expense per firefighter. Chief Chu explained that we cannot reach the standard that FEMA is really trying to get departments to in one year. However, an application for six positions could theoretically get the departments the ability to respond with four men on each engine, which may be enough for FEMA to justify and see that we're making progress towards that standard. As a comparison, currently, we often are forced to respond with two or possibly even only one person on a fire engine if both ambulances are out. So it would be a significant improvement for our citizens. Chief Chu has confirmed that there would be no payback provision if a future council decided not to keep the additional positions at the end of the grant. So if there was, for some reason that they determined that that money was not worth being spent and, and wanted to lay anybody off, they, there would be no repayment from the city back to FEMA. So we're always looking for, for ways to, to bring federal and state dollars back. And this is a, this is an important step for Steenville, so. The, the motion did, does come to council with a unanimous recommendation. However, the original motion did not include a number to be authorized for the chief to apply for. So I would make the motion at this time to authorize staff to apply for twenty-twenty-one safer grant in an amount necessary to fund six additional shift personnel. Second.
Have a motion, Nick second, any discussion? Proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Our second item on the agenda was that staff requested to reclassify the MSC clerk position from a clerk two to a clerk three and adjust the pay scale accordingly. This would increase salaries for the MSC between four thousand, three hundred and eighty-one and seven thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars annually, depending on the experience of the candidate chosen. This change was planned to be proposed during the next budget, but with the recent vacancy in that position, it makes the most sense to go and consider the change now, prior to the hiring process for, for the replacement in that position. And, and also in order to allow us to attract the most qualified person. That motion comes to council with a positive, a unanimous positive recommendation, and I would make that motion at this time.
Here a second.
Second.
Nick makes sec, makes the second to the motion, excuse me. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Monica.
Mayor, Council. We've reviewed the financial statements entering January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. The financial indicators are, well, they vary, but a lot of it's kind of what we expect. For our property tax, we received three point one million in the month of January, resulting in two hundred and twenty-nine thousand or three point seven seven percent increase over the funds collected through last January. The six point two nine million collected fiscal year-to-date is ninety-four point five seven percent of our budget, which is a little bit higher than the ninety-four point oh-two percent that we anticipated. For sales tax, we received five hundred and twenty-eight thousand in January, which is thirty-four thousand or six point seven eight percent more than the funds collected last January. The two point three nine million collected fiscal year-to-date is thirty-eight point four one percent of the six point two three million budgeted, which is higher than the thirty-three point six seven percent anticipated. For our hot funds, the lodging establishments have reported a hundred and twenty-one thousand in hot funds through January as compared to a hundred and forty-five thousand through last January. We have two entities that are one-month delinquent, which we are working with them on getting that corrected. We spent a hundred and eighty-four thousand in, in hotel occupancy tax funds through fis, through the fiscal year-to-date as compared to seventy-nine thousand last year, which is due to our Day Tripper contract and also the Gateway Planning Contract. The target budget for operating revenue is twelve point nine one million. We expended six point, we expended twelve point nine million in revenue, I'm sorry, cut off. We received twelve point nine million in revenue fiscal year-to-date, resulting in eleven thousand under our target budget. The target budget for operating expenditure is a seven point two million, we expended six point seven million fiscal year-to-date, resulting in four hundred and seventy-eight thousand under our target budget. Our operating revenue last, received last year was twelve point nine eight million, as compared to the current year's twelve point, operating revenue received last year was twelve point nine eight million, the current year's is twelve point eight nine million, which is an eighty-six thousand dollar decrease. The increases in our property tax, sales tax, and building permits offset the reductions in our service charges, our hotel occupancy taxes, and interest on investments. However, there wasn't a big enough offset for the large insurance proceeds that we received last year.
Sales tax in January was which month of collections?
November.
November.
Also, we had a very large sales tax in February, it's about nine hundred thousand. There was about, I think it was two hundred and sixty-seven thousand or so of audit collections. So when you look at that graph, when you see that there were several months that we were lower, it's because they weren't reporting as they should have been, and so now it's catch-up, so.
So the control is actually making a mistake, huh? Never mind.
They didn't make a mistake, entities weren't reporting and turning it in, and so they audited and caught them and said, please pay, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Control.
Yeah, they did their job.
I'm not gonna give them much credit.
It's an oversight.
The operating expenditures last year were six point eight million, and the current year was six point seven, resulting in a hundred and three thousand dollar decrease. Are there any questions?
Any question for Monica? Thank you, ma'am, as always. In case anybody wonders, we appreciate what you do for us. Want to make sure that your boss hears that over and over. Okay, Mr. Sanford, who has a watch or a timer on their clock that, that will actually go on, wait a minute, I didn't, I have not given you the floor yet, that will sound off in three minutes? You gonna do that, Steve? Okay, three minutes.
Man, you're gonna want more of me, I just know it, you're gonna want so much more, oh, that's my time. Well, happy Independence, Texas Independence Day to everybody, it's also National Old Stuff Day, Doug, you'd appreciate that. National Banana Cream Pie Day, National Read Across America Day, and that famous Dr. Seuss book, Red Fish, Blue Fish, No Media on Harbin Fish. I wanted to talk a little bit about, that was for you. We just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the great things that are happening, and I know we all have some fun things going on in town, and I'm very excited. Just this year, even though we've had three weather events, we have had people visiting us, developers visiting us from Indiana, North Carolina, Dallas, Miami, Boston, and Georgia, and had phone calls from about two or three other communities as well, all looking to invest in Steenville, Texas. That's exciting stuff, considering that we've been shut down some here and there, so we're, we're really proud of that. Project updates, give you a few little tidbits here, some of the exciting things we're gonna talk about, of course, are going to be in executive session momentarily. Washington Common, so, is a big project, which by now, a lot of people are already seeing all the dirt work, seeing the things moving. They are somewhat on schedule, they're expected to go vertical by May or June, they're doing a lot of the dirt work. And also dealing with utilities, we're helping them through that process as they have to relocate, move, and change some of the things related to utilities. The exciting thing, though, is that they're also ninety-four percent leased and continuing with their last few little shop areas as they move forward. The new Whataburger is progressing nicely, I'm not really here to talk about the Whataburger, but more about the existing building, because it will become vacant. The rumors are out there about so many of the things going into that building, I can tell you right now, nothing is going into that building. However, as part of our job, we're gonna try and fill it up, and we've got some prospects to put into that spite, space. It is a groundlaser, our new owners for that building, for that structure, and we are pairing them up with the folks that we need to do so. Clean Control is the new industry we've talked about many times, we recruited them last year. They are already starting on their facility improvements, a little bit here, not too much, but they have done something that I think is of great importance for us. They've had their first hire, which also kicks in gear or something else, it is someone local, which is exciting. But they'll be a kind of a, sort of a plant facility manager, the title of the role can shift as they start to come in here. They are still scheduled to get at least seventy-five employees at good wages and, and full benefits here, which we're excited to see. Once that opens up and they've moved everything, they will be the Texas headquarters for Clean Control, and they will serve not only the central part of the United States, but all the way out to the West Coast as well. So this has the potential to grow even bigger as a plant here in town. Let me skip that part, Wellington State Bank has made some progress in their move to the Northwest Loop. One of the things that is part of that is not so much the bank itself, but we also have about three acres additionally, give or take, that we will help them to fill, the banks are not typically in the real estate business, but they do have some extra land, in which case we can pair some places, some, some other establishments there. What's important about that is now we start to see more of a full development in that area, not just, not just the financial institution. So if you, if you know about the Northwest Loop from, from Washington up a ways, there's quite a bit of development. And then you go a little bit further, and then there's a hole, and then quite a bit of development going north to Lingleville. So our job now is to fill that spot in with some things that bring revenue to our community and also to the quality of life. And lastly, as I mentioned, it's Texas Independence Day, I think the chatter taking place amongst the business community today is Governor Abbott's declaration of March tenth, next Wednesday, Texas businesses will be able to operate at full capacity. And I think that's going to impact us a little bit, we've been pretty good here in Steenville in the fact that they've already been operating to the best that they could, considering all the restrictions and mandates. The thing that this will do, though, is will remove many of those other restrictions that some of them have, and I think that'll be important for all of us, you guys as ambassadors of this community, us as an economic development organization, to continue to help and guide them through that process as they still have some considerations for those that have concerns. And I think the concerns don't necessarily go completely away just because some of the restrictions do. However, they do ease some of the panics, and I congratulate the city for some of the work you're doing with the, with the vaccinations. And I think those, in addition to everything else that's going on, not only locally but nationally, will start to kind of maybe ease some of the fear and the panic that's been associated with some of this for the last year, and it has been a year now that we've been, in fact, I think March fifteenth was your first declaration, first meeting of last year. So we're, we're right there. It's been a rough year, but I think this, the business community is owed a lot, just as you as leaders are owed a lot of credit. I think our businesses also are owed a lot of credit for sticking by, we've not lost hardly any business throughout the course of this ti, this time period. And as Monica said, our sales tax receipts continue pretty well and function at a high level, which means a lot of people are staying here, supporting our businesses. And I want to encourage everyone to continue to do that as we move forward.
Any questions for Jeff? Jeff, as always, we want to say that we appreciate all the work that actually goes.
As do I.
Thank you, sir.
And she did a really good job making the report in your absence.
Oh, she's, oh, that's why I have to send her here, Mark.
Thank you, sir. I have a consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve it, present it.
You have a motion by Mark, and then second by Brady, is that right? That passed the consent agenda, all in favor say aye. Same sign opposed, consent agenda's passed. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on March sixteenth, we'll have the council committee meetings. April sixth is the next regular council meeting. And kind of dovetailing on what Jeff closed with, given the governor's declaration today, we're gonna be reviewing all of our programs to see how they're impacted by that, the senior center, the rec programs, the, the whole schmear. That's all I have.
Mark.
Yeah, just good to start having semi-public meetings again, and really appreciate the fact that the Ministerial Alliance was represented here tonight. I think that's a big part of our meetings that, that's been going on for a while. I know these guys have been busy in the background this entire last year, but Brother Whitman, good to see you this evening, thank you.
I just want to echo again what the, what the council said about the heroes that were here tonight, especially the City Water Department. Those guys and those videos, if you hadn't got to see them, are absolutely incredible. And I want to thank them each individually, and also Nick and the rest of the folks that, that were running the, the emergency management team. Alan, appreciate everything that you and Jason did and the rest of the team, so, thank you.
I'd also say one more thanks to the Public Works Departments and the emergency management team, really all departments in the city. There were, I know I talked to a few people through all of that, and, and, well, probably I wore a few people out through all of that. I know that the emergency management team was, was in constant contact with Encore and lighting fires under them to try to get people power. So great job through that, that difficult time. The Vaccination Center, although we approved some positions tonight, that's gonna take quite a bit of time, and it's still operating. I would encourage, I know, I think Brandon has been out there and volunteered, I volunteered one day last week. It's very fulfilling to go out and volunteer and see the relief on some of these people's faces when they're finally able to, some of them will tell you, I can finally go see my grandkids now, or my kids will finally come over because they're not afraid of, of making me sick. So I, I would challenge anybody on the council, if, if you can get away for a half a day or a full day from your job to, to certainly do that. And anybody in the city, any citizens that would like to volunteer, contact the Fire Department, they'll, they'll be glad to have your help, so. It's an incredibly run facility, that's all I got.
At the risk of sounding redundant, I want to thank all of our city employees. We've got an amazing staff across the board, we honored some specifically tonight, but all of our city employees did an outstanding job. And something that David mentioned in his prayer, our whole city pulled together. We had people bringing firewood, bringing water, moving heaters, doing all kinds of things for their friends, their neighbors, their families. And you don't find that in a lot of communities, and that's one of the reasons that we choose to live in Steenville, is because we have that kind of friendship and that kind of fellowship and that kind of compassion for each other. And I want to thank you for mentioning that, I want to thank the Ministerial Alliance for their prayers for all of us, because we certainly need that divine guidance and help, and we, we appreciate that encouragement, too, thank you very much.
I'd like to echo, gosh, Alan, that was really good, echo everything that's been said, frankly, it's a town full of heroes. And we're blessed to live here. And there are a lot of volunteers, like Ricky mentioned earlier, and I know we've got a few of them sitting up here that have been volunteering out at the Vaccination Center. And hopefully, there'll be many more that will do that very thing. It is a wonderful thing, it's allowing this community to open up, and so, and that's where we want to be. And so I just encourage anyone who'd like to volunteer to get in touch, get in touch with our, our great city staff here, because they have done a marvelous job through all of the hard trials and tribulations of the last few weeks. And, and, and get in touch with the staff here with regard to volunteering out there. And let's get more people vaccinated, and, and we're taking care of the community, that's what it's all about, so thank you.
I just want to say it's good to have your brother back up in here and, and have your wisdom and presence in this room. And, and it's good to have a prayer before the meeting again, and I appreciate everything you'll do, absolutely. Good to see people back in this building, it's the people's building, and it's good to hear the rustle and the bustle and the, the. It's the people's building, and it's good to hear the rustle and the bustle and the, the talk and the debate, and that's, that's what our country's founded on, and it's good to have that back. I just want to say, the water guys, I saw those videos, it's pretty incredible, and they've been thanked a lot, but I don't think you can, what they did in that water is unbelievable. They probably didn't have the right equipment, but they made it happen anyway, and that's how lucky we are to have guys like that work for our, for our city and work for us every day. As Ricky and them mentioned, I'll be brief. Out at the vaccination center, they are pretty dependent on volunteers right now, so if you do have free time, half a day, full day, I encourage you to get in contact with the fire department. Chris Elston is the head of that, setting up volunteers and getting workers in place. It is absolutely incredible experience out there. It is rewarding, it is fulfilling. You get to see a lot of people you haven't seen in a long time from all over the county. And I've saw a lot of people I haven't seen, and even had a lady ask me if she could give me a hug, so I gave her one. But it's, it's, it's a great experience. Please help with some volunteers in that place. There's a job basically anybody can do. You can sit at a computer, or you can just help. But anybody that can volunteer, please get in touch with Chris, and thanks for all the hard work.
And you can't say enough about those guys. You can get a perspective if you want to look at places like Abilene, for example, who the city of Abilene with 100-plus thousand people had no water. Their whole system shut down. And ours could have done that. Matter of fact, Alan was texting me one night and said we're losing water by one foot an hour in the towers.
Yes.
And so, because of the hard work of the guys here, we didn't have to boil water. And there, there are cities all over the state of Texas that had to do that, and some of them still doing it. And so I want to appreciate, we all appreciate what they did, because they, they kept us, like Alan said in his speech, his comments earlier, kept us in water. And that's really, really important. Everybody appreciates what they did. And if you haven't said thanks to them, if you're a citizen watching tonight and you see a guy walks in and he has a water department, you know, emblem on his jersey, buy him lunch. They deserve it. So, thank you all very much. All right, next item is, we're going to go into executive session in deliberation regarding economic development, section 551087 and section 551074, Project Braun statue, and, and personnel matters. We'll reconvene at the end of the executive session.
7:40 I want to call us into, back in the session. So we hear a motion based on what happened in executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to allow CEDO to continue negotiations with Project Bronn statute with an amount not to exceed the amount discussed in executive session.
A motion is second on the 4A discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed, motion passes. It is 7:41 and we're going to adjourn city council.